We're gonna go ahead and get started. Thanks for coming tonight. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, whose banner stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks again for coming out. We'll start with number one, approve the agenda, make any additions, leations, or corrections. I've got four things right now. Koi was able to make it tonight, so we're gonna remove E1, which is the arena update. We're gonna make a change to item number A2, which is on the consent agenda, letter E, the pay request, number eight. And it's listed as $221,061.42. It should read $128,446.84. We're gonna change K1, which is the personnel, number one. Approve job descriptions somehow. There was just a, I think, people got a copy that there was, all the job descriptions were put in there. It's supposed to only be that wastewater, wastewater operator two, the one that Nick Fitch is resigning from. So, change that to only that job description, not all of them. And then remove F1 to reschedule to April 11, a couple different scheduling concepts. We'll move that to April 11, F1, under whole business. So that's what I have or have had. Do you see anything else?
J3 is gonna be an update on our Safe House School grant application.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Do you have anything?
No.
No?
Good. Other than a little bit on the...
Park board update. Okay, yep. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Lonnie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Pass unanimously. Thank you. Onto the consent agenda. That's there. Everything was in your packet, all the payables. And we did have the one change that we just approved, and that's letter E, the pay request from 221 to 128,446.84. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll make the motion.
Thanks Doug, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Lonnie. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, Linda. Visitors to the council, we don't have anybody scheduled tonight. We'll move on to public forum, just so everybody knows. If you wanted to say something in public forum, there was a card to fill out on the way in. And just to reiterate, we've had a little bit of stuff getting out of hand here the last couple of meetings, and that's on me. I'll do a better job of keeping control over what's said or not said during a public forum. Anything that's under negotiation, litigation, or personnel, we really can't discuss. So if anybody comes to the podium who has a current negotiation or litigation with the city, we just gotta, we just have to stop that. So if I can have all your guys' support on that too. That was, that was my fault for letting that continue, but it was kinda already gone down the path. So with that being said, we have one person, Todd Suer.
Yep.
When you come to the podium, if you state your name and address, that'd be great, and then we'll listen to your comments.
Sure, perfect. My name is Todd Suer. Live at 1001 Fifth Street here in Casson. And I just wanted to come to the council to address what was just recently in the news this past Sunday. There was a newer resident to town who had talked to the media about possibly the removal of the daily sirens that happen in town. The ones that occur at noon, at 5:30, and then at 10 o'clock. He was rather misinformed in the news article and in the, well, in the report itself. So I felt compelled to, since he was starting a petition, I felt compelled to start my own petition as well, called the Save the Siren Petition. It's basically a counter petition to whatever amount of people he gets. And so far, as of 24 hours, I believe we're up to 530 people so far who have signed this petition. So I just wanna say to everybody who has signed it, or who has went out and looked at it, thank you very much. It's just something just so simple, but it makes part of our small-town community just that. It's just those simple things like that, that some people who may have moved here new, aren't aware of the historical significance of it, or all the information behind it. So just wanna thank everybody who has signed the petition. And if the person who is coming up with the petition to stop sirens, if they do decide to submit their petition, I'll be ready to submit ours. So, thank you.
Thanks, I appreciate your comments. Thank you. So we have our public forum. No public hearings on the agenda tonight. Committee reports. This will be under the planning and zoning. We have to adopt the motions and the resolutions for the condition use permits that were denied because the zoning amendment was denied, so... Okay, and these first two, we have to do them individually, are because the zoning change was denied. So we have, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve the resolution denying a condition use permit to allow for church or private education institution at 105 Manorville Avenue South.
I'll make that motion.
Can you stand with a second?
Second.
Lonnie, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries unanimously, Linda, thank you. The second one is the same. As a result of the zoning being denied, we have to officially... I'll entertain a motion to adopt the resolution denying a condition use permit to allow for childcare facilities serving 13 or more persons at 105 Manorville Avenue South, Casson, Minnesota.
I'll make that motion.
Stand with a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. And then on to number four. This is just an amendment to the resolution that we had last time to state the reason why.
Well, I actually had thought out why it should remain C2, and it's actually remaining CM. So, which is, that's the only change between the resolution you passed at your last meeting and this amended resolution is that...
The clarification.
Yes, I had incorrectly stated it on the record.
CM instead of C2?
Yes.
Okay, alright. So I'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended resolution denying a zoning map amendment for the property known as 105 Manorville Avenue South, Casson, Minnesota, to remain CM rather than C2.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Doug, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Stand, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Onto the mayor's report. Number one of the mayor's report is...
Oh, I want to do a report on committee.
Oh, wait, yep.
I was gonna give a little...
Park work, yep.
Ronnie said he got 18 softball teams to play this year, as of now. He got everyone hired for the Aquatic Center, all his positions filled, and he said he had 10 more that he had to turn away. There's been other years where he had a harder time getting enough kids, and so there's an overwhelming response of people applying for the job.
That's good.
That was, I thought it was real good news. And he's got 21 residents that want true boulevard trees. Now, this isn't in the construction area, this is other residents. 35, 45 trees. I think Arbor Day, they're gonna plant three trees in the East Diamond Park. And then just pick it up campaign, they're planning for May 5th, to make it a city home.
Okay.
I think that's about it.
Okay, thanks Doug, appreciate it. And I'm gonna skip back to the public forum really quick. We got a gentleman here who went out and grabbed the card, so he's filling it out.
Okay.
Yeah, completely lost.
Yeah, so I saw you look, I'm like, I got you. So if you wanna fill it out quick, then come up to the podium and get that to me. Let me let you say your piece.
What does we got, second? That starts at eight right now, as you know, the cleanup.
I believe so.
I think that's what it's been in passing.
It should be in the minutes here.
I think Jan was working out in state, so there'll be a draft one in your next packet.
And we've got domain.
Yeah.
I'm right like a doctor.
Name and address, yeah, name and address would be great.
Just go quick. Alright, hi everyone, I'm Adam Hayman. I live at 405 First Avenue Southwest. I had been talking to my neighbors, Jason Farnsworth, who comes here, whatever. And I had mentioned to him about possibly being able to put some road closures up for our wedding, which we'll be having in June. And he told me, he had talked to a couple of people, he told me what I needed to do. I have a map, basically, that I drew out. What I'm asking for is a road closure on First Avenue Southwest between Fourth Street Southwest and Fifth Street Southwest, directly south of ShopCo. We're gonna be having, we own the corner lot and the lot next to it. We're gonna be having our wedding and reception in the lot next to our house. We were wondering if there was a possibility we could, from say noon until like 10 o'clock, if we would be able to maybe put up a couple of road close signs, basically First Avenue, for safety and convenience for our guests. It's gonna be a pretty quiet, it's nothing huge, but since it's not a very busy road, and we do have... The only person that's really gonna be affected other than us would be Wade and Jamie Finney, who live directly north of us. And we have a letter from them for this situation. I've known them my whole life, so I don't know. That's all I'm proposing. I have, like I said, I, he told me to make a map, so I made a map. That's pretty much what I am coming to ask. And that would be June 16, 2018, from noon until say 10 o'clock.
How about if I have, get with Charlie?
I need the police to...
And the police department. We'll kinda make some connections, what they're requesting, and have the right people get back to you. If they say okay, then you bring it to us, we approve it. Okay.
Yeah, that was said, we asked.
Yes. When you called me, that's...
Charlie's gotta get the verity for him.
Yep, so we'll go through the process.
Alright, thank you, Martin.
Cause I know the place will have part two parts.
Can I ask you a question? So if we approved something like this, who is responsible for calling the county and letting them know of the road closure? You know, like in a construction area, we have to contact the county, let them know what's being blocked?
We never call the county when it's open for festival.
Really?
Cause we have our own police department.
Why do you make contractors do it?
You know the contractors.
Cause they all come to the city and ask.
Especially the electoral contractor.
Maybe you just run it through the county that way, and they know.
First responders and that.
Or have the right person get back with you.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. Congratulations on the wedding. Congratulations on the plan, buddy.
He's honest.
Onto the mayor's report. First one is proclamation for National Library Week, which is, I have the proclamation, bear with me. April 8th to the 14th, so that was in your packet, it's in the public packet for everybody, library. So we do appreciate the library as a community asset. It's very well used by the community and those outside the community. So therefore, be resolved that I, Mayor Casson, do proclaim April 8th to the 14th, 2018, as National Library Week. I encourage all residents to visit the library this particular week to explore the new at your library and engage with your library in communities matter. At Casson Public Library. So, consider it proclaimed. Number two, dear graduation, I had a chance to attend the dear graduation at the middle school last week with the SRO. 150-some fifth graders go through the program. It was always good to sit there, shake their hands, and they're all pretty excited now. So we just hope that carries through to high school. So, good program, just does a really good job. Kids really buy into what he's telling them, so that was really good to see. Planning session recap, I just had down to thank everybody who was there to give us the information. Teresa, Nancy, Charlie, he's not here tonight, Brandon was there. We got some pretty good information. So if we have any questions or follow-up, just get back to the right person. I just wanted to thank you guys for providing that update. It's valuable to get firsthand, face-to-face feedback. Remind everybody of the upcoming comp plan open house on May 14th, is at City Hall. There's an open house at 5:30, and there's a public hearing immediately afterwards at 6:30 for the public to make their official comments on the comp plan. So it's May 14th here at City Hall, 5:30 and 6:30. And then number five, I know, I see that Rebecca has it in her economic developer, development director's update. But just to let everybody know that we are on the Cedar Regional Development Tour this year. They're gonna be making a stop in Casson. They go through the whole southeast Minnesota, and they pick Casson. I think there's three or four communities where they're gonna stop. We'll make a busload of developers, builders, real estate agents, buyers, sellers, that type of thing, to Casson. We'll have a little bit of time with them here at a stop. We'll be able to go take them around town and show them what commercial lots or opportunities that we have available here in Casson, taken by the school, you know, our infrastructure, that type of thing. So we'll get a chance to show off, that's August 2nd. We'll get more detailed time on that later. But it's a pretty good opportunity for us to show off what we have and what we already currently have, and that we have the opportunity to build in the future. Pretty excited about that. That's all I've got tonight, and we'll go on to the administrator's report.
Yes, so Lisa Clark, the executive director at the Destination Medical Center Economic Development Agency, did reach out to the city of Casson, the city council, and asked for an opportunity to come and give an update. So shall I provide her with some council meeting dates and have her do a maximum 15-minute presentation at a council meeting? Or how would you like to?
I think that'd be a good first step. And if we wanted to do something in the community, we could talk that night about what they have available to do at a community open house or open forum, something at the library or something. If we can get her here for 15 minutes, that'd be great.
Okay, I will do that.
You guys, everybody agree with that, or?
Yeah, I mean...
I mean, we're directly being affected by DMC, positive and negative.
I was kinda thinking about that we'd have to limit it to 15 minutes, but I guess...
Yeah.
For a council meeting, and then if they wanna do something, well, we could...
Yeah, and if she's got something really good for 20, that's fine. I mean, you just kinda let her know we're interested and hear what she has to say.
We just don't wanna give her an hour.
Possibly scheduling something for the entire community that we can work together to do, especially with our comp plan coming up in May. You know, maybe we do something coinciding with when the comp plan gets finalized and approved, and then we do something, celebrate that and tie the DMC in with it, cause it's gonna be directly affected, so.
Right, and that may also lead me to number two, and an opportunity to invite Senator Sundum down, if we do something in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. And Brandon, before I forgot, Senator Sundum did kind of an update from up on 16th Street, and the funding we didn't get, and what potential funding we still have available.
Sure.
If you could report to him on that.
Okay.
Okay, so then I will try to coordinate also with Senator Sundum's office. He specifically said that he needed to get down here and meet with us, so I'll coordinate something for him.
The email we got back from him today?
Yes.
He didn't really answer the question.
No, he didn't, but...
I'll follow up.
Okay.
He's a politician.
Well, it's all about the local control. There's a lot of stuff going through the legislature right now that is going to, if it all goes through, we'll take away local control over decisions that we can make for our community. And he kinda said, Tommy P. quotes, kinda nice, you know, cities like local control when it's in their favor, but they don't. When it's not, they'd rather push it to the state. He never really said if he was supporting it or not.
Right, right.
So we'll follow up, we'll drill down more on that, so. It was kind of an odd response, so. Okay, engineers' report. Thanks Teresa, by the way.
You're welcome.
Didn't you have?
That's gonna be engineering.
Sorry.
That's right.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Three items tonight. The first one is a resolution establishing 11th Street Northeast. This is the roadway that's on the north end of the fairgrounds from Highway 57 to our Fifth Avenue. Establishing that as a municipal state aid street. Ultimately, it's kind of a streets that we can designate within our town. Due to our increased growth, the streets we've added due to the new subdivisions, we are allowed to designate additional streets as MSAS streets. What designation means is that we have more, what MINDOT calls needs, and then needs equals money. So the money that we receive from municipal state into our, into our funds comes from those needs. That's why we're designating this roadway as an MSAS street, to essentially bring more money in for MSAS projects. Doesn't mean we're gonna have to allocate any money to that street, it's in pretty good shape, but it's just gonna help generate additional revenue. I think we get about $102,000 or $250,000 a year in MSAS money, so that'll help continue that fund. So that's funds that we could put towards 16th Street going east or potentially west or other roadways. So with that, recommend we pass a resolution to, and get some more money coming in from MINDOT, so.
Okay.
Any questions you have?
Questions? We can just arbitrarily pick any stretches of the street to designate, or do you have certain criteria you have to?
There's certain criteria, it's become contiguous. So in this case, we're going from a trunk highway to our Fifth Avenue, which is also an MSAS street, so it's contiguous. You may see on like the city base map there, 16th Street going east from 57 goes all the way out to Dobbs County 15. That's why the city had to take that roadway over, cause we had to have a contiguous road to another, in that case, county state aid road, so we could use funds there. So that's, that's, the true requirement, the other thing is that they want them to be higher-traffic roads, and we want them to be higher-traffic roads also, so we can generate more needs, needs is based on traffic volume. So in this case, that's why we went with 11th Street, was there's enough traffic on that, especially during school times, to generate that additional revenue. And it fit with how much mileage we could allocate, cause we can't, we don't actually allocate. Everything is municipal state aid streets, but we're limited by only 20% of our roadways, so.
Okay, alright, thank you. Any other questions for Brandon Hill? Entertained a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion to approve establishing 11th Street Northeast as a municipal state aid street. And we have a second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries unanimously. Number two.
Number two is FYI only for the council. We have established a kind of kickoff meeting for the 2018 construction season for our 2017 street project, Third, Fourth, and Fifth, and Second Streets Southwest. Ultimately, in your council packet is a letter we sent to the homeowners as a open house from 1:00 to 6:00, a week from tomorrow. So we have two meetings for the homeowners, just go through construction with them, remind them what to expect, give them information to get on our emailing list, so we can keep them updated during construction. And we are gonna have weekly onsite meetings for the residents to come talk to our construction representatives with any questions they may have. We've currently scheduled those on Tuesdays at 9:00 a.m. and 5:30 to give kinda to the group, two different times, touch base with our staff. Those are gonna be just west of the pool, kind of in that open area in the park there, North Park. Tyler Baumback from our office, who managed the project last year, is gonna be onsite again this year. He's gonna be sending out weekly updates, so those are gonna start getting kicked off again here. And I believe the council's been on that email update, so be looking for those to start up here. And we've been telling all the homeowners, make sure you get on those email updates. Construction changes pretty quickly and schedules change, so if you wanna be informed, get on the email updates, so. Again, this is FYI for the council, and council's welcome to attend. If you guys do have a quorum, maybe let me know now if a majority could plan to attend, so we can post that. But I think council may have attended it last year, I think we're a little behind.
I plan to attend it.
I'm gonna try to make like a clock one, but so that's kinda...
Let's say it's a quorum.
Will this both as a quorum?
Yeah, sure.
Okay.
I just think it's nice for the people to see us.
Is it gonna be, last year I attended a pre-construction meeting?
We just scheduled that for next Thursday?
Yes, for the fifth at 10:30 a.m. at Public Works. I just got it.
Yeah, we just scheduled it today. Yeah, a week from tomorrow also at, yeah, 10:30 at Public Works, so.
Okay.
You're welcome to attend.
That'll be about done again.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you. And then number three?
Alright, number three, we just added that today. That is our Safe House School grant application we had from MINDOT. We were awarded those funds, I think I may have mentioned that at the council workshop, but we were awarded the $300,000 from MINDOT for their share of that project. That project is the trails and sidewalks kind of around the school area there. We did the Safe House School planning grant with step number two. We did this, what they call an infrastructure grant, to actually put the concrete down, put the tumors down, to pave these trails and concrete walks. So of the 4.5 million applications, we were part of the 1.2 million that we were awarded. So thank Dan for taking time out of his day to help me with that presentation to MINDOT. That goes a long way for MINDOT, they like to see when council members, mayors, and school administrators are there, so. That project will happen in 2022, so. That's about it for that. That's more again, this is FYI, and we're gonna continue to work on that, and with that project here in a couple of years.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Brandon on the Safe House School? Thank you very much. Onto personnel, number one, wastewater, water wastewater operator two, job description.
So this position starts us out closer to where we live, Nick, and that is somewhat more Class B and Class B, Class B water license and Class B wastewater license, which our wastewater operator position does not require. And then this would start him, this would start the new employee at that grade that Nick had moved to as part of our labor negotiations with ADW, so. That's where this position falls in.
This is what Charlie, cause I talked to Charlie a little bit during the personnel, when I talked to him during the evaluations, he was requesting to not go down in licensing.
Right.
With this, he's coming with the same licensing.
Because it wasn't me, kinda saying that there's so many years that you gotta...
It takes to move up.
Experience, or, yeah, move up to the next level.
And if everybody retires when they're planned to retire, we're gonna be in trouble.
Okay, are there any questions for Teresa? I had Charlie had talked to you, and I talked to Charlie on that, so. It makes sense to me, as far as if we're losing someone at a certain licensure, we should replace it at that same licensure. The job description should require that. Any other questions or?
No, I agree.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the job description for the wastewater, water wastewater operator two.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Carry unanimously. Number two, accept resignation of Nick Fitch. You hate to see him go, but you can't blame somebody for bettering themselves and moving on to a good opportunity. So we wish Nick the best and thank him for all the service here at the city of Casson. He's been a great employee, from what I know. And everybody said, and Charlie knows he's gonna miss him, but the same thing, we wish him well. So I'll entertain a motion to accept Nick's resignation.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
Thanks Doug. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Carry unanimously. Thank you. We approve posting the position, a motion to approve posting the position that we just approved the job description for. I'll entertain a motion to approve that posting.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks Dan, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. The attorney's report. Number one, lease for old library building, 16 First Avenue Northwest.
Yeah, I believe the revised lease is in the packet. We added some language. I apologize, I didn't bring that file with me. I'm trying to remember the language that we did.
It was about the improvements, if they made any improvements, that they were first to be approved.
Right, they would be approved by the city, and that they would become the property.
Add to that, yeah?
Yep, yep, we did add. We added a paragraph in each section in there. I wanna say it was section...
Section 10 is an improvement.
So it's essentially to, for the renter to acknowledge that if they're making improvements, that the improvements are at their expense. They have to be approved by the city, and that they would remain the property of the city at the termination of the lease. The other issue that was discussed at the last meeting was adding some language about negotiating in the future. It was trying to give them some idea of where we wanted to be market value-wise in the future. And I didn't make any specific, I didn't make any revisions in that regard, because I didn't know where we wanted to be market-wise in the future, and I was concerned about pigeonholing up into something that if the market fluctuates significantly between now and soon, we are renewing the lease.
And I put together, I did kind of a market analysis based on appraisals of other buildings in the area. We just had the appraisal done on our buildings, we're getting ready to remodel some other ones. So this is just, this is again, just a sample, and I've seen it other business incubators, when you do a kind of a subsidized rent to start off with. Cause you wanna know, as the tenant, you should know, okay, we're gonna renegotiate the rent in a year, well, what's that gonna be?
renegotiate the, the rent in a year. Well, what's that gonna be? You know, and as, as the owner of the building, we wanna know what our value is. Basically, if you take the downtown district and most of the buildings down there, our average rent is just shy of about eight dollars a square foot per year. Okay. Um, and if you put that as a value and they wanna pay three hundred dollars a rent, you see the first line, it'd be about about buck forty-one a square foot. And then, I used a four-year scale to get to year five would be full boat, and it shows what the annual subsidy would be to the far right. And the annual subsidy, in the eyes of the, uh, the building owner, is this person's gonna come in and put in some significant money into the building to make it usable for them. So, yeah, we're subsidizing it as the building owner to give them less rent over the next four years, but they're also improving the building by how many, thousands of dollars. So, again, this is just a sample of, of what I've seen in other business incubators in the past in other places. And I just kinda put together that eight's kind of a, a number. And so, it's just a matter of if council wanna get there in four years, three years, two years, eight years, you know, we just adjust the numbers. But that way, the person knows that, hey, at the end of twelve months, my rent's gonna go from three hundred bucks a month to five thirty-one dollars a month. And as they're doing their business plan for the next five years, they know, and if they come back and say, well, no, it's just not realistic numbers for us, we can negotiate, but this is just kind of a, something I played with and looked at, cause then you could see exactly, cause really at eight dollars a square foot, it's tw- it's two, two thousand five hundred and fifty square feet, that'd be about seventeen hundred bucks a month, would be full rent at today's fair market value. Uh, we wanna see a business start in Cassin, that's great. We own the building already. To help them do that, the first year subsidy's sixteen thousand dollars, they're gonna sink probably a lot more than that into the building to get it ready for this coffee hosting. So, it just kinda puts it in perspective of what are we trying to do? And again, this is just a sample. It's not, hey, this is what we should do, but that eight dollars is pretty much, if you take that building for the square footage where it's at, that's probably in the ballpark what somebody would rent it for.
No, but I, I, I really liked the, the way you did the stepped it up, you know, a little for four years in a row there and then it, uh, it, it really gives them something to look at and us to have an idea and them to have an idea. I mean, I would, good, good job on this, Chris.
Anyway, just, I don't know if we need to approve an exact step schedule, or can we, will we have E D A be the ones to do that negotiation? Or it would be us to do that with, uh, the tenant?
I think we would do that.
Okay.
And that we can certainly put this, you know, we can, we can incorporate something and so they recognize that it's going to be stepped up. I'm not sure how definite we wanna get.
Yeah, and that, again, this was just a sample of what I've seen in the past and kinda use this, our market for downtown Cassin of what prices are.
Why don't we go forward with this in the agreement? And if they have an issue with it, we can negotiate from there, but this will give us the starting point.
Put this as an appendix to your agreement.
Right.
Include it as a guideline perhaps?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. I like that idea.
Guideline.
But that way, they know, like Chris said, upfront, what it's gonna cost them the next year and next year.
They're to look forward, man. And that's what.
They can plan.
I looked at this, I thought, wow, what a good idea.
Yep.
Good, now, good.
And I can make it look, yeah, prettier.
This is pretty simple, I like.
What I, I would, I, I think the easiest way to incorporate this into the current lease would be just to, when we're talking about base rent amount, refer to make this a, an attachment and refer to it that it's anticipated that the, the costs will increase over the course of the next, uh, four years because of the anticipated improvements that they're gonna make to the property, a guideline showing rough, a rough estimation of that increase in base rent is attached as, think of it, whatever.
Sure. And it, you know, basically, what you wanna establish right off the bat is fair market rent seventeen hundred dollars a month. We realize, we wanna use this as an incubator situation and help you start and grow your business in Cassin. And our goal is that in year five starts, so after forty-eight months, you're at the seventeen hundred, and our hope is that either that's a great building for you and you just continue with that, or by then you've blown the doors off and you're ready for a bigger building somewhere else and we can start over at step one with somebody else. So, but at least they know right off the bat, this is what's, you were gonna go do this with somebody else, you know, Todd owned the building somewhere, somewhere, you're gonna get seventeen bucks a month, so.
Yep, I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
And I can do that, do you want me to bring it back to them, should we approve it in the next?
Yeah, let's do it that way. Um, so they're, they've read the document that you provided and, and they were in agreement.
Yeah.
In those terms, and, and I don't know that they would have any objection to this too, but I think if we approve it when all the terms are nailed down, then we can provide it to them with all the terms nailed down.
Okay. Alright, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
And number two, okay, uh, we're now gonna close the meeting to discuss real estate offers and counteroffers. Uh, when the closed meeting is over, we will open the meeting back up. Will the closed session be recorded, Melanie?
No, um, yes.
Okay, so the closed session will be recorded, so we'll have to ask everybody to leave for just a little bit and we'll come back and bring you back in once the closed session is over.
Would you stick around, Todd? Thank you.